Alright, I will call to order the Ravenna City Council meeting for November 1st at 7:00 PM. Uh, the first item on the agenda is a moment of meditation and silence. Now would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and Chelsea, what you call the rule?
Mr. Kelfley?
Here.
Ms. West?
Here.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Here.
Ms. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes for the Ravenna, the council meeting of October 4th. Were there any additions or corrections to those? Do we have a motion to accept this submitted?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and Mayor, I don't know if you want me to hand it off to you for this next agenda item, the award presentation?
Well, actually, I've got a Mr. Content has worked hard on this and Judy is going to do the presentation.
And I believe Mr. Cap- Captain Hall? And the mic should be on up there.
It is. So, good evening, thank you for your guys' time tonight. Um, Judy and I have spoken and thought it was important, uh, to recognize Melissa Moore tonight. Uh, I'm gonna give you a quick background, we'll take a little out of your time. Um, I'm a captain over the fire department. I have taught CPR, um, for the city now for fifteen years. Tim has been very instrumental in getting his programs together and running city employees, not just, uh, fire department, but more the police department, Parks and Rec, um, all of the departments within the city, running them through the CPR program, keeping them up to date, um, watching when they expire, make sure that they get renewed on, keeping our equipment and all of that. So, we do have, I think, a fantastic CPR program within the city. And a testament of that was, um, Melissa was hired as the senior employee running the air. Um, in July, she sent you one of our classes in this room and we talked about the CPR and, uh, how to do the Heimlich for somebody choking. She was at summer camp, uh, probably even a month later, in August, and there was a small child, six, six-year-old child, he came running up to her, um, normally choking, but then he grabs his neck, gets his arms up in the air, she could tell that he was distressed and choking on something. And she performed the Heimlich for her own kid, expelled the item, did some breathing, police pride, doing everything normal like we want him to do. If she hadn't stepped in, when she stepped in, this scenario would have been much different, and we all know that, but it would have been a lot different. Um, so, um, just want to recognize her, she did a fantastic job, she stepped up where she necessarily, necessarily didn't have to. Um, so you guys can just stand up, or make a cheer out of applause. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Tim, are you gonna, or Judy put that on our city website so that it's on, so that it can be on our city website?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so we will move on to communications. And I believe the only letter that we all should have received was in a binder, um, which, if you have not picked it up yet, is in there. Uh, it's a letter from Thomas Haley about the brick road on, well, freedom repay, or re, uh, laying the brick and in the binder is some information from Mount Lebanon, it's the white paper, uh, on brick roads out there, so. Is there any other communications? Is there any delegations from the public that would like to speak this evening? Alright, we all received the report of officials. Uh, were there any questions there? Chief, I saw you had a December timeline for the, I know that, uh, Mr. Michael brought it up, what's that?
For 2013.
Yeah.
We are actually going to 11th, December, to South Sycamore to do our Heimlich inspection.
Yeah.
And after that, we'll be brought to Ohio, we'll be going down to Southern Ohio, which will be initially doing the emergency lighting, and all the tool mounts on it, they'll take a few weeks and then we should never. I'm saying by the first December, but hopefully it's the evening before Thanksgiving.
Great. Was there any questions from council on the report of officials? Do we have a motion to accept this submitted?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, next on the agenda is report of committees. Committees will begin, will be November 15th, uh, in two weeks, at 5:30, starting with utilities, Mr. Moskin?
There'll be nothing on the agenda at the present time for the committee in two weeks. It's, there's a slight possibility for a change, but at this time, nothing.
Information systems, Ms. West?
I have one item on the agenda this evening, uh, next week, not the current.
Planning, Mr. Karras?
We have one item on the agenda tonight, and we will need a meeting in two weeks.
Alright, committee of the whole will be on Monday, November 22nd at 7:00 PM. Public health and safety, Ms. Michael?
Yes, I do have an item on tonight's agenda, and I'm not sure yet about, uh, next week.
Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Harper?
Uh, nothing for consideration this evening, but we will be having a meeting on the 15th.
Personnel, Mr. Calfey?
No plans for a committee meeting on the 15th.
Community and economic development, Ms. Wood?
One item on tonight's agenda, and, uh, to be determined for committees.
There will be one.
Okay.
And any updates from the cemetery?
Yes. Hey, one thing that there's, will be ninety-five hundred that will be spent for tree, tree removal. These trees aren't coming down just for the sake of cutting them. A lot of them are, when I say dangerous, they're dangerous in a way, they're dying, and they could be hazardous to people walking on the roadways or driving, that nature, that's the only reason they're coming down. There's an allocation of ten thousand, but ninety-five hundred is the amount that will be spent. We'd like to try to keep it no more than ten at the most. So this is going to be in a big asset. So that will be, there's not an exact date, but it probably between now and possibly mid-December. The other thing, there will be, I believe it was twenty-five trees, yes, purchased, that will be planted in different areas of the cemetery. The exact spots are not exactly designated yet, but Mark Gabriel will be having those exact spots in the very near future.
Alright, anything you want to add?
Uh, we have tentatively approved the layout for the roads also, in the back new section. Uh, they'll be getting surveyed hopefully fairly soon, and once I have a definite diagram, I'll bring, bring something in to share with everyone.
Okay. Alright, any updates from, well, Parks and Rec? I don't know if you want me to throw it out to Judy, or?
I was gonna say, you're here in the flesh, we could, you get the report. Um, our archery program has begun, uh, it's in full swing right now. Again, the program filled up completely, and there was waiting list, and the waiting list filled up completely. And so that's one of our more successful programs that we've had going on. Currently, we only offer the introductory lessons, but we have interest in both intermediate and adult programming for that. So, right now, in a kind of a long-range plan, we are looking at a building of a permanent archery range, uh, at City Park, uh, to be able to have a spot where we can hold this, uh, classes. Uh, also with that, it would include batting cages as well as axe-throwing lanes.
Wow.
Okay, so, we can, we can, we can look forward to that, so. Yeah, did we check the insurance, I forget?
Yeah, we did.
We better. Bubble soccer has begun, that's always a fun one that we have for young kids. We had our Halloween drive-through program, uh, on the 30th, and quite a good turnout for that again. We were worried about the weather, but it turned out really, uh, quite, uh, quite nicely. Uh, some improvements that we wanted to make you aware of, at Chestnut Hill, the playground got a bit of a facelift. As you know, the bridge there at Chestnut Hill was destroyed, well, damaged and had to be replaced. Uh, we were able to save and repurpose a number of those boards, and Buzz and his crew took those and built some, uh, large benches inside the playground area, and a great job of repurposing, uh, those materials and really improving the playground area there. And then finally, item to share with you is, at Havers Woods and City Park, uh, we were able to schedule, uh, through the Sheriff's Department, uh, three days, uh, to have, uh, workers from his, uh, inmate training program to come out to City Park. And we had a total of six men, and when they came for three days, they painted all of the benches, picnic tables, pavilions, signs, and playgrounds at both of the parks. We had over a hundred and forty hours, service hours, from them, and they did an excellent job. If you happen to be out there, it was just an excellent job, uh, by that training program. So we were happy that they were able to help us, and, uh, we hope to schedule them for, uh, Chestnut Hills in the spring to do some work out there. And that's all from Parks and Recreation.
Great. Alright, well, we will move on to first reading of ordinances, uh, beginning with ordinance number 2021-87.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the Ohio EMS grant award and the sum of $3,628.63 from the Ohio Department of Public Safety and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, this is sponsored by Public Health and Safety, Ms. Michael?
Um, this is just accepting the money, no match is required, and, um, I don't think there's really anything else to explain, we've talked about it in committee. Any questions?
Do we have a motion to waive the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Into adopt the emergency clause?
Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And then a motion to pass the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Alright, that ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2021-88.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to apply for the 2021 Akron Cleveland Association of Realtors Grant and declaring an emergency.
This is also Public Health and Safety, Ms. Michael?
Yeah, this is just, um, what we talked about in committee, nothing's changed, just, um, able to apply for the grant and to see if we're able to receive money. And it's, this one would be, um, for the nine eleven, um, garden that they want to do.
Any questions? We have a motion to waive?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And then a motion to pass the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2021-89.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application for Ohio Public Works Commission Funding, OPWC, for the State Route 14 Water Tank Project, further authorizing the mayor, in the event the application is approved, to execute contracts to participate in funding of the city's local share for the subject OPWC project and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, this is sponsored by utilities?
Yes, this is, in the past was always referred to the GE stamp pipe, and this includes, this project and having it removed, that there will be a new tank relocated. I believe possible, one possible site would be at City Park, the exact spot is not, uh, cut and stone designated at this point.
Any questions from council? Anything you wanted to add? Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to waive?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And a motion to pass the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Alright, that ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2021-90.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application for Ohio Public Works Commission Funding, OPWC, for the Page and Scranton Street Waterline Project, further authorizing the mayor, in the event the application is approved, to execute contracts to participate in funding of the city's local share for the subject OPWC project and declaring an emergency.
This is also utilities, Mr. Moskin?
Yes, this is to replace one line on the length of Page Street that will be including all hydrants. The portion of Scranton Street would be between Main Street and Mechanic, including all the hydrants in that area as well. And including any of the valves that would be included in that, in those two water lines. Those are planned to be done, whether they're started in the spring or early somewhere, somewhere in that time span next year.
Any questions on this item? Do we have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And a motion to pass the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Alright, that ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2021-91.
An ordinance appropriating $7,000 from the Water Fund for surveying costs for Pratt Street and declaring an emergency.
This is also utilities, Mr. Moskin?
Yes, this is to appropriate seven thousand, so the Pratt Street can't be surveyed of those costs by the surveyor for Water Fund project through the entire length of Pratt Street. The Water Fund project would be similar to the previous that were mentioned on Page and Scranton.
Any questions on this item? Do we have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved. Second.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And we have a motion to pass the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Alright, that ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2021-92.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Portage County Solid Waste Management District for the collection of recyclable materials within the city of Ravenna and declaring an emergency.
This is also utilities, Mr. Moskin?
Yes, this involves to keep the recycling every two weeks picked up. Without this, recycling could be disturbed, and this would be continued for the next total of eighteen months, continuous, under, for this project. And the recycling, I believe, and I understand many others, this is a very important service to this city at this time. Uh, many residents have commented that they are very much in favor of it, and they do like this service, the way it stands every two weeks.
And Kay, do you mind just, uh, explaining the apartments, um, elaborating on that a little bit?
Um, yeah, um, so, starting January 1st, um, Portage County Solid Waste, they'll no longer be servicing apartment units, like four and over. Um, and the biggest reason for that is, um, due to contamination issues. So, I will be submitting a tracking sheet for the November 5th, 15th, um, committee meetings to amend, um, section 1062, zero two definitions under the recycling contract, and then also, um, have to amend 1062.11, um, collection rates. Um, those people that, that won't be having recycling services anymore, they will be paying a $3 fee as opposed to an $8.50 fee per month for those, um, three units and less.
Okay, thanks. And then, I know that I mentioned it before the meeting, but can you just talk about, one of, in section 8.1, it reads, what Kay is alluding to, but the district will provide service to residential units, up to three residential units, and mobile home parks as defined in section one, and I believe the question in regards to mobile home parks, unless you want to ask it?
It's been established that there's not, there's any at all inside the city of Ravenna.
I understand, um, just a point of clarification, but if we're okay with it, then, yeah. Any other questions on?
Well, I had to, did we ever get an answer to the wording regarding the rate increase and the recurring? Because I don't see any change in the contract.
I talked with, uh, Chris Murcher, he didn't want to add to the contract. As far as the rate of $5.50 a month for the recycling cost, that'll go through the, uh, July 1st, 2023 time period, the full eighteen months. There will be no increase during that eighteen-month time period. So he's verified that for me, I, so comfortable with, uh, that position.
Yeah, my only concern has been that, that section 7.1, um, allows for an additional twelve-month term, I just, I mean, have you got an answer, was the intention that this is yearly, or just, just one time?
No, I did, um, ask Dawn about that. Um, she said that after the initial eighteen months, it will renew, um, every twelve months unless there's sixty days notice given by either party that they want to terminate.
I just wish it was better written, because the last contract caused problems, was, because it was somewhat vague. And it just could be worded better that it says that, because it only says an additional twelve-month term, but.
I think as you pointed out, the last five months, there's a ninety-day time period they have to give us notice.
For the rate.
One year continuous, and.
Right.
With the extension. And we then have sixty days prior to the termination to determine that we do not want to continue that contract. So they'll give us a thirty-eight times window, so period of time to evaluate wanting to extend that one year.
Alright.
And to be honest with you, I mean, the way this goes, you know, you just keep hoping that they'll continue servicing, providing services.
Yeah, no, this is, this is a better contract in the sense that they have to give us ninety days notice before they can raise the rate, and if they do that, then we have ninety days to decide with, well, I think it's ninety days for the rate and sixty days for any renewal.
Well, just make the decision that we don't want to continue it.
Right.
Sixty days prior to the termination.
Alright, well, I mean, I think it could be worded better, but, um, I mean, I'm okay with it. I wish they made a few adjustments, that's all.
Anyone else have any, any questions on this? Alright, well, do we have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin? Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And we have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
And a motion to pass the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin? Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Alright, that ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda is resolution number 2021-93.
A resolution endorsing the Ravenna Downtown District Plan as commissioned by Main Street Ravenna and prepared by Jason Kentner as a conceptual plan improving downtown Ravenna.
And this is sponsored by planning, Mr. Karras?
So, we presented the resolution at the committee of the whole meeting, and we did make some adjustments. This is purely to endorse the plan. Uh, the only other change, and I did, uh, publish this through email to council, um, was that the plan won an award. A couple of days after we talked about it, unfortunately, it came, the timing wasn't great, so I added a last whereas clause acknowledging, um, this award, which is a prestigious award, this is a national, well, it's the Ohio chapter of a national society. So, um, I hope that's okay with everyone. Okay, because I mean, it doesn't substantially change anything about the plan itself or anything else, but I think it's worth acknowledging such good work was put into the plan.
So moved.
Any questions from council on this item? With the resolution, we just need a motion to pass?
Uh, I guess.
Or do you want to go through that? Motion to accept?
So, motion to pass.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kelfley?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Alright, that resolution is adopted. The next item on the agenda, congratulations to us all, Bill Harper and Dave, Dave Dix here, so.
Good work, guys.
Thanks very much, we appreciate it.
So, yeah, moving on to ordinance number 2021-94.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to approve the community reinvestment area application for 228 South Sycamore Street and declaring an emergency. for 228 South Sycamore Street and declaring an emergency.
This is sponsored by Community and Economic Development. Ms. Wood?
Uh, yes, this is for 11 million plus in improvements. We did amend the report, or the request. It was originally 100% of payments that they were asking for. Now they've downed it to 50% for 12 years. And that was due to the new regulations put on by the state.
The amendment was of the application.
Right.
The resolution states the same.
Do you know when this is going to be more public? Where public is going to be able to see this?
They are wanting to break ground on December 1st.
Okay, but as far as the, this year?
It's now allowed to be public.
I didn't know if there was going to be.
But there is no problem with this one.
Right.
We are involved with some other things that are not finalized that we're working on. But this gentleman wants to start working on this December 1st.
That's awesome.
So that's why we need to have this in place because it still has to go to the county and then has to go to the state. So it's on kind of a tight schedule. Right?
Well, if there's no questions, then we have a motion to waive the three separate readings.
So moved.
Fourth.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Caris?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
And a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yeah.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Caris?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And a motion to pass the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Caris?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
All right, that ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2021-95.
An ordinance to appropriate an amount not to exceed $3,000 to create a community survey by Full Spectrum Media from Fund 101 and declaring an emergency.
This is sponsored by Information Systems.
Um, we talked about this at committee. This is just another avenue for our residents to be able to provide feedback as far as two things that they have concerns about or provide positive feedback for our community.
Any questions on this item? Do we have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Caris?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Caris?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
And a motion to pass the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?